We'll call this meeting to order. And Madam City Clerk, you can do a roll call.
John Harabedian, Mayor. John Capocia, Mayor Pro Tem. Council members, Rachel Arizmendi. Denise Delmar. And Jean Goss.
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Arizmendi is going to leave us in the pledge and the invitation.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And for invocation and moment of inspiration, I don't have any prepared remarks today, but given this time of our city with respect to our reorganization that's coming up tonight, with respect to our budget and concerns with the direction of our city, I would just like to ask for everyone just to take a moment of silence and reflect on what may be important to you and to think about what priorities the cities may have with you as an individual, with you as our family and us as a community. So if we can just take that moment. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, can we have a report out of closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session this evening with its labor negotiator to get an update on the status of negotiations with the police association. Direction was provided to the city's negotiator, but no action was taken.
Thank you very much. And the agenda, any proposed changes to the agenda? I have one myself. I was going to pull 1B for a brief discussion, but anything else?
I wanted 1B out, too.
Okay. Would that change? Motion?
Move for the amended agenda to be approved.
All's in favor? All right. I think that was unanimous. We will move on to Mayor and City Council member reports. I'll start on my left, Councilmember Arizmendi.
At this time, I don't have any on my part.
Okay. Neither do I.
Make that three.
I'll just do a real brief one. I did attend the coalition meeting today that is opposing the 710 tunnel. And just real quick, the city of Pasadena has now weighed in heavily on that and is opposing it as well. So that's just really good news. I mean, the big dog in the room has joined the fight, so I'll just leave it at that. But there was some other discussion about how to proceed going forward to maintain the pressure, but I'll leave it at that.
That is good news. Thank you. And I don't have anything to report. We'll open it up for public comment for items not on the agenda.
Caroline Brown, Alta Vista Drive. I'm passing around to you a brochure from a neighboring purveyor of earthquake preparation materials. And it gives you an idea of what the wide range of things people should have in mind when they are preparing for disasters. I'm actually quite surprised that locally here, we haven't thought too much about the Nepalese earthquake in regard to our own exposure. But last Wednesday night in Pasadena, the, I believe it's called the American Society of Seismologists, had a meeting. And I and another CERT member attended, well, there were three of us, attended. And basically, what Nepal experienced this past Saturday is roughly the same thing that would be generated by our major earthquake fault, the San Andreas, coming off, the example that they give coming from the Salton Sea. I was thinking about this from the standpoint of the serious differences in construction of the housing between these two parts of the world. But there will be a lot of people in Sierra Madre, Arcadia, Monrovia, wherever, Southern California, that'll be sitting in their much more substantial homes without services and without preparation. So even though we like to think of ourselves as being better prepared and from the standpoint of stronger housing development standards, we still have a sort of lackadaisical idea about how long we would exist without water, gas, electric. And you have to look in the mirror, and that's your first responder, the person that looks back at you. So all of us need much stronger sense of preparation. And I wanted to share that brochure with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Susan Henderson on Sunnyside Avenue. And everybody's sitting there wondering, uh-oh, what is she going to say? Well, I just want to invite everyone, the council and all the members of the audience and the TV audience, to the Sierra Madre Kiwanis Club's Fifth Annual Boots, Gootin, Chili Cook-Off on Saturday, May 9th, 6 o'clock PM. It is a lot of fun, a lot of great food, the opportunity to taste the wares of some of Sierra Madre's finest and not-so-finest chefs. And allegedly, I don't see any Rotarians in the room, but there will be a cook-off between Dave Ruprecht and myself. So the cost is $25, and we encourage you to come out. This will support the activities that we do around town for our youth and our community. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Shannon King, and I'm a member of the Library Board of Trustees. And I have a few quick announcements to share with you, as well as members of the community. The 53rd Annual Sierra Madre Art Fair, which is sponsored by the Friends of the Sierra Madre Library, is coming up this weekend. It will be held at Memorial Park, Saturday, May 2nd, from 9:30 a.m. to 6:00, and Sunday, the 3rd, from 9:30 a.m. to 5:00. We have 70 artists who will be displaying their artwork, as well as music, food trucks, wine and beer garden. The featured artist this year is Frank Yee, and he will display his juniper bonsai. And all proceeds from this event do benefit the library, so I sure hope we'll see you all there. Also, we have scheduled a special Library Board of Trustees meeting on Monday, May 4th, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. And I know the Mayor and Councilmember Goss and City Manager Aguilar will be in attendance, so thank you for scheduling that with us. We look forward to learning more and discussing the general fund budget, so you can obtain more feedback from the public. So thank you. And last but not least, we have our May Calendar of Events, which outlines all of the free programs for all ages at the library. So that's now available. And I have a few flyers I'll leave with you this evening, and we encourage everyone to please join us at the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Renee Casuda, West Carter. And I started talking to you guys about this a year ago exactly. And I really want, I'm sorry, I'm a little like a terrier. I can't let go until I see it discussed or acted on or rejected. As this agenda is printed on both sides of the paper, I love the efficiency of that. And can't we get our city council elections to coincide with the November elections? And can that be put on the agenda? And can it be discussed? And when? And, whoa, whoa. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to make a little announcement that on your way over to see all that great artwork in the city, that you stopped by the fire station for our annual pancake breakfast. And it's $5, and it's all you can eat. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Taryn Hildreth, 187 East Montecito. As you're aware, we have been defending ourselves from the city-initiated lawsuit claiming our property is a public nuisance for the past five years, and the city will finally be required to prove their allegations against us when our trial finally begins. We know that many of you have an interest in knowing what is going on with our case. I doubt anyone other than the city manager has any idea of the true facts or the excessive amount of money spent on the retaliation against us. In response to our request for public records for invoices the city received from the Dapper Law Firm related to the prosecution of our case, the city provided invoices dating from October 2010 to April 2013, which totaled over $282,000. The city failed to provide invoices beyond April 2013 and has not responded to our request for confirmation whether such invoices exist. Since I can't imagine the Dapper Law Firm working for free, I expect that the city has incurred at least another $280,000 perpetuating this prosecution. That does not include the upcoming trial that will most likely run another $100,000. Is it just me, or do others agree, that $600,000 of taxpayers' money could have been used in a more productive way? For those of you who have an interest in knowing more about our story, please go to For those of you who have an interest in understanding how the current public nuisance laws are being misused, go to publicnuisancescham.com. The month of May will keep us busy with trial preparation. However, we are open to answering any questions and speaking with anyone who is interested in knowing the truth about our case. At this time, we would like to thank all of you who have shown your ongoing love and support. We are very fortunate to be surrounded by many wonderful people, and that has given us the strength to keep striving to expose the truth. For others who may be interested in supporting us, we totally understand your fear of retaliation, so you may anonymously support us by going to gofundme.com/sterlingoak. That's gofundme.com/sterlingoak. Thank you, and we are looking forward to complete and total vindication.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. We'll bring it back. And Madam City Manager, a report on the agenda, other than, I guess, item 1B.
On the consent calendar, item 1A is approval of resolution 1517 approving our demands. At 1C is an agreement with the YMCA Metropolitan Los Angeles for providing classes at our community recreation center. At 1D is approval of resolution 1516 for the compensation of Sierra Madre personnel on a portal-to-portal basis when assigned to emergency incidents. Translated, basically what that is, is when our firefighters are dispatched with the OES water tender that the city's reimbursed from the time they leave Sierra Madre till they get back. At 1E is approval of resolution 1515, a memorandum of agreement with the, with Los Angeles County for the purchase of EPCR. EPCR are Electronic Patient Care Reporting System, and this is authorizing the city to apply for a grant for the purchase of those. That concludes staff's presentation. We'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? None from me. We'll open these up, these items up for public comment or questions. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any discussion before a vote? Oh, Mr. Gold, please.
Nobody wants to be first.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jerry Gold, 441 Ramona Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Harabedian and council members. We all know why so many people love living in Sierra Madre. We know that outsiders want to change the things about our city that we value so much. Fortunately, we have a city council that is committed to supporting development that does not destroy the uniqueness of our town. Mayor Pro Tem Capocia wisely observed that no plan is perfect. And if I may add, having no plan at all is just too risky. I am reminded of the tale about a man who goes to see the doctor for a checkup. After the examination, the doctor says to him, "The bad news is that you have a high genetic proclivity for contracting a most deadly disease. The good news is that there is a shot that will give you a 95% chance of not dying from the disease." The man says that a doctor, he takes good care of himself. He's young. He runs three miles a day, eats well, and he doesn't need a shot. The next day, he gets the disease. The day after that, he dies, and the following day, his ghost rises from the grave and goes to see the doctor. The ghost asks the doctor, "Is there anything I can do about what happened to me?" And the doctor says, "No. Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about your situation, but you can go and talk to all the other people who faced the kind of decision you had to make and urge them to be proactive before it is too late." Members of the council, before you is a plan, item 1B. It is our vaccination, our immunization against the deterioration of our city. Please be proactive. Take the shot before it is too late and approve item 1B. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. And just a reminder, thank you very much for those comments. Item 1B will be considered right after this vote. So anyone else who has comments on this, we will get to you quickly here. Let's vote on items, consent calendar, 1A through...
A, C, D, E.
E, without B. Have a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 1B, which has been pulled.
All second.
All's in favor? All right. And that was unanimous. Okay. Item 1B. And I don't think we need a report. Madam City Manager, it's our ordinance considering the changes to the R1 zoning, which I pulled to ask a few questions and then have a discussion regarding a few minor proposals. One question I had was, if this passed, and God forbid, a second-story home in town was done away by natural disaster, earthquake, fire, and that person wanted to build that second-story home again, can we have something in the ordinance that, I guess, that would specify that they wouldn't have to go through a CUP process to build the exact same home that they had before? Or is it inherent within the ordinance, and is it obvious without having to state that?
I don't know that it is inherent or obvious. And if that's the intent, we could certainly make it clear that if you, if your house burned down, or you lost your house to some kind of casualty or disaster, that we wouldn't make you, you know, come back and seek discretionary approval to build the same house on the same footprint. We could put that in.
Okay.
As an exception to a CUP requirement.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And just so I understand how it works in process, would, if we added that piece into it, would we have to go back to a first reading?
I wouldn't think so.
If we could come up with the language tonight that we could all agree on, we could, and assuming that we didn't publish the ordinance as it stands now in full form, which I don't think we did. And if we could come up with the exact language, then we could have this be the revised, this would become the first reading, and you'd have to then do a second reading. Now, on the other hand, if you're only able to, if there's consensus to give staff direction, but we can't come up with the language, then we'd have to do a new first reading and a new second reading. If that makes sense.
That's a good question. If we were to consider it, yeah, hopefully we could just come up with the language tonight. Other question was, would second-story homes, existing second-story homes, be considered legal non-conforming uses of that property, under the new, I guess, R1 standards?
I don't think it would be a legal non-conforming use, because it's a use that's possible. You just need to get a conditional use permit under the R1 ordinance, depending on whether it's, you know, a brand-new second story, or if you're building more than, I think it's 50%. So it doesn't make it a legal non-conforming use, it's just a process.
Okay. All right. Those were my questions. Any other questions before we open it up for public comment? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. I know that we have folks here that want to comment on this item, so please come to the podium and try to keep it to three minutes. If you go over, I will not cut you off.
Anne Chesterman, 671 Brookside Lane. The reason we need the CUP to review second-story homes under 3,500 square feet are examples, houses on Camillo of 3,150 square feet and 2753 square feet. These standards allow people to have a voice, to be able to report their experiences or to file their complaints. Communities afford their members to have a voice, and these standards allow people to express what they're experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for the record, who provided these for us? Was that...
Eric.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Debbie Sheridan, Valley Vista Drive. Our General Plan Update Steering Committee worked very hard for four years to complete the general plan. Then the Planning Commission and you council members worked hard on a few revisions to make it even stronger. Tonight, I would like to remind you of points 1, 3, and 5 of the vision and guiding principles, and I'd like to read them now. Number 1, preserve and sustain Sierra Madre's distinctive character as a historic, small town nestled in the foothills, but within a major metropolitan area. 3, protect and be responsible stewards of the neighboring San Gabriel mountain, foothills, wildlife, forest, open space, watershed, and all other natural resources. 5, ensure development is done in harmony with its neighborhood while maintaining the character of the town and without unduly burdening existing city services and infrastructure or impacting the environment. And that is the one that's most on point to what you are discussing right now. And unfortunately, there are numerous examples of developments in our town that have had adverse effects on their neighbors. Some of these were made well-known to the public during the general plan update process, and again, unfortunately, some are more recent than that. I have also placed a list of 30 addresses of developments that have negatively impacted the people around them, as well as the packet of pictures that you're seeing. It is by no means a comprehensive list, but each of these 30 examples clearly demonstrates the need for a second-story conditional use permit, which will result in greater communication between neighbors and thus greater harmony in development. A win-win situation. And I would just like to hold this up, this packet. You can see how thick it is. If anybody would like to take a look at it, we have copies here. And please remember that a conditional use permit is just that. It doesn't preclude not allowing the building to go on. And I would like you to pass this tonight. Please consider the residents of Sierra Madre. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Lady, Carol Willis, Carter Avenue. Before I, the clock starts, Mayor.
Take your time.
Attorney Highsmith, it was my understanding that every resident in Sierra Madre is guaranteed the right to rebuild whatever it is they have should any kind of natural disaster take it away. I remember it was discussed extensively when Don Watts was on the council, whenever that was.
And Tara, no, we can, and Tara, you can respond now if you'd like, if there's a...
Oh, I'd have to look that up. That's what I was asking, the city manager.
Because I think that resolves any problem you have with that. I believe everyone is guaranteed that right. And now, here we go.
Thanks. We'll, yeah, we will look into that. Sorry, go ahead, Tara.
Thank you. Mary Ann McGilvery couldn't be here tonight, and she asked me to read her email. I will read portions of it to try to get under three minutes.
Oh, no, you can read it all, if you'd like. I'm not going to cut you off. So go ahead.
Dear City Council, I urge you all to support the Planning Commission recommendations regarding changes to the municipal code without modification. The evidence, if you are of the legal variety, or the data, if you are of the scientific bent, clearly support the recommendations. 1, the Planning Commission deliberated for several months, took public testimony, incorporated testimony and information gleaned from the general plan update process, and applied their collective experience in reviewing projects to formulate the changes. The commission, the members of which trump the council's land use expertise and longevity of experience, was deliberate and thorough. 2, you as a council have taken public testimony that supports the recommendations. There is ample data available within the general plan update process, including the results of town hall forums attended by hundreds, yes, hundreds, of residents, an online and mail survey, and many months of public input at the general plan steering committee meetings. 3, the Preserve Sierra Madre Coalition has clearly articulated the rationale for the changes during public comment at city council meetings and in numerous emails and letters directed to you. These communications summarize the positive aspects of the changes directed at preserving the character of our city by carefully managing land. 4, the city attorney explained the merits of the recommendations to you at your last council meeting. This preservation effort is real and incipient. In addition to the projects already of concern, and I refer you to that list of 30 addresses, go to those addresses, talk to those neighbors. There are a number of large properties that have been held in families for many years that will be disposed to heirs in the next decade. These heirs may feel differently about or may not even wish to live in Sierra Madre, and those properties, then, are at risk. Living in Sierra Madre has value, and it may just come with the cost of following the rules. Sincerely, Mary Ann. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tara. Mary Ann, if you're watching, the only thing that I take offense with was her line about the Planning Commission trumping our experience. That was, but that was a nice email. Thank you. Thank you.
Matt Bryant, Edgeview Drive, also with Preserve Sierra Madre. I just wanted to reiterate Preserve Sierra Madre's support for all of the recommendations, excuse me, made by the planning commission. We believe these measures will help Sierra Madre get out in front of the mansionization issue that has affected so many cities throughout the San Gabriel Valley. We also believe that these measures, particularly the mandatory CUP for two-story homes, achieves the right balance of private property rights, between the person who wants to build the two-story home, and the neighbors who may be adversely affected by having their views blocked, their privacy impacted, the value of their home impacted, as well as just even the light coming into their home. So we believe that the mandatory CUP for two-story homes simply levels the playing field for those neighbors and allows them to give their input. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
Caroline Brown, Alta Vista Drive. I was very pleased to hear Mayor Protim's presentation about the fact that Pasadena has signed on with Sierra Madre, South Pasadena, and a variety of other cities in opposing the 710 Tunnel. I was at a meeting last night in Los Angeles where a map of that tunnel was passed around, and I observed down the right-hand column, a list of all the cities that were in support of the position no on the 710 Tunnel. And I was really quite proud to see Sierra Madre's name being passed around to this group of people that were meeting on other conservancy issues. I'm pointing this out in relationship to the sentiment that you held strongly to, to write such a letter, should be the same sentiment that you all vote to pass these R1 changes. Because you can't, on one hand, follow the logic that we want to protect Sierra Madre from the inundation that the 710 Tunnel and all that traffic would represent, and at the same time, not see locally, neighborhood by neighborhood, by neighborhood, we have the same issue facing us from the standpoint of preserving what the citizens of Sierra Madre think the city of Sierra Madre should be. Thank you.
Okay.
Pat Alcorn, I live on Grand View. And I just wanted to emphasize what everyone else has been saying at the, at the podium here, but also to remind you, I know you've received some phone calls in opposition to having these ordinance being passed, but I am a member of the Preserve Sierra Madre Coalition along with, I don't know how many others, I, there's an email list that's, that's probably maybe 30, 50 members long. And, and we all are hoping that you would please pass this ordinance the way it's written. And I would like to hear, if somebody has an argument against it, I would like to hear them come and, and talk about it, and tell us what their objections are. So, again, please vote the way it's written. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Any other comments?
Charlie, Mr. Hood.
Right. There we go.
Nobody coached me. There are 400 members for the Preserve Sierra Madre Club membership there. I moved into town in 1972, and in 1987, a big condo went up to the east of me. I lost the sun until around 11 o'clock. I never saw the mountains again from my backyard. And the people in my backyard structures there, they had a better view of my backyard than we did. One day, my wife was out there sunning, and somebody goes, "Yoohoo, yoohoo, I really like your backyard." Gospel truth. So, yes, those of us who moved into town and worry about our view, it can happen. The other thing, Ms. Willis had said that when we lose a structure in town due to an earthquake or that, we can rebuild. During the earthquake, I had serious damage to my house, and when I checked into it, I did not have to go through anything special to rebuild my house. What I find, I guess appalling is kind of a big word, but really disappointed that our city attorney didn't know such a simple thing as this, and want to proceed further with investigating it. So, I remember that being on the books, and I'm sure as others here hear it, they'll probably remember that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll bring it back to the council discussion, and in defense of our city attorney, this was an unprompted question. I, you know, this was not something that I had asked her about beforehand, and our municipal code is quite lengthy, and I, I don't think that any city attorney would know every provision in the, in the code. But to that point, you know, I, I think that, you know, while we have some residents that think that there is a provision in our code that would allow for existing homes to be rebuilt if they got knocked down, notwithstanding a amendment to the code as we proposed tonight, I do want some clarification on that, and we don't have to, yeah, and we, it doesn't have to be tonight.
Yeah, I would just say that, that is a provision that you will commonly see spelled out to clarify the right to rebuild a non-conforming use. It is not a provision that you would find standard in a municipal code. And while there may well be a provision that applies to all zones, in the, in Sierra Madre, I do not, off the top of my head, without consulting the code, do not know the answer to that. But it's a simple matter to look it up, to see. However, as I say, that is a common provision specific to legal non-conforming uses.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Well, and not to belabor this discussion, but I did have a few things I wanted to bring up with the council, and let me just start by saying, thank you very much for everyone, for your comments. Very much appreciated in the emails and the calls, and I think we've all heard from a fair, fair amount of community members on this item, you know, on both sides. But I, I do appreciate folks coming to the podium and expressing their views. I'll just say that I think that both sides here are coming from the right place. I don't think I talked to anyone over the phone, over email, and I don't think there's anyone up here that doesn't want to preserve Sierra Madre, that doesn't want to keep the town the same way that it is. I think the goal and the vision is the same. I think where there's some disagreement is execution and how to get there. And so I hope that no one is, is kind of mistaking questions or perceived modifications to what has been proposed by the planning commission as being anything but trying to get this thing as right as possible. Which brings me to a few comments I had tonight. I discussed earlier, I, I think that the, the first two parts of this ordinance have some real merit. I think the lowering the CUP threshold, I think gives the city, you know, a basis to review some projects that might not otherwise be congruent with the surrounding community. And I think that it would allow the planning commission to review some projects that otherwise they wouldn't be able to review. And I think that the setback for the second story makes, can make sense as well. And I expressed my support for that. You know, the two things that I had issues with were the second-story CUP and the gross floor area, but, so I wanted to bring some potential items of thought on those two issues. On the second-story CUP, I'm wondering, and we touched upon it last meeting briefly, I'm wondering whether a minor CUP would be sufficient, rather than a full-blown CUP. And let me, let me explain why. I think that a minor CUP would still allow for a review process, it would still give notice to neighbors. Neighbors would still have a opportunity to weigh in as to whether they thought that the addition of the second story was somehow prejudiced to them and wasn't right. And I think it would help in that regard by providing a, a review process. And what it wouldn't do, which I had real problems with last meeting, is impose a, give or take $4,000 requirement and a long-drawn-out CUP process for a second-story addition. We heard from members of the community that, I think John Hutt had come forward and said that a minor CUP, in his view, would make sense, and that he wasn't in favor of the full-blown CUP. I, I agree with him. And so, I guess my first proposal would be maybe to think about, instead of doing a full-blown CUP for the second-story additions, having a minor CUP. Not sure what your guys' thoughts are on that, and...
Well, if I can chime in, I think my position was very clear in the last meeting, and I don't want to bore anybody or take up everyone's time. I think you can go back and look at the tape. I think I, I stand by everything I said. I'm not crazy about doing a CUP for second-story additions because of the basic principle I have that, I think, when people buy a house, or people have bought houses in this community, they fully expect to have that kind of use in their property. And I think if we do something this significant, it's, it's going to have to either have a very low impact, or it shouldn't be done at all unless there's an absolute compelling reason, and I have not been convinced up here that there's a compelling reason. But a minor CUP, it seems to me, I could, I could bite down hard and accept that if we could get a majority of the council to support it.
And maybe, just so I can get clarification, what's the major difference between a minor CUP and a regular CUP?
The biggest difference, and, and I wish we had a planner here tonight to go into more detail, but the biggest difference is a minor CUP is reviewed by the planning director, and so it's going to cost less. And anytime you have a minor CUP, it's going to be for something that's considered more usual, less controversial, less, less of an impact. And because of that, of course, the cost is going to be less to the applicant, but a minor CUP still goes through the same notice procedure, and neighbors and folks that want to weigh in on it can send letters and comments into the record, and, but there's no actual hearing for someone to come to, not like an actual, a regular CUP process, which goes before the planning commission, and then there's a whole hearing. And that's the big, that's the difference.
So that is a major difference between the minors?
Yes. It is a difference. One has a hearing, one doesn't. One costs less, one costs more. But otherwise, it's the, the same, the process.
Madam City Attorney, does the, there is a notification process, though, or in the minor CUP, where everyone in the neighborhood would be notified?
Absolutely. What I cannot tell you is the difference in cost.
Thank you.
Madam City Manager, would you roughly know what the difference in cost would be?
You give me two seconds, I can...
Yeah, yeah, take your time.
A question regarding that. If the planning director feels that this is somewhat controversial, could he, he or she then recommend that it go to a full CUP?
The minor CUP process, my memory of the provision is that the planning director does have that ability to decide themselves to put anything before the planning commission, ask the planning commission to review it instead, which of course would, pardon me, trigger the higher price.
Go ahead.
You know, I think the hearing, the public hearing piece is, is key, and, and in this process, and as we've been discussing it, as to the importance of looking at all these four different elements. So, I feel strongly about keeping it as a CUP. What I would be willing to consider, and I know we talked about this in the last meeting, was the cost involved with it. And I know that's not part of this ordinance, as I understand it, that would be another piece to it, is looking at the fee structure.
Yeah, the only, the only problem I have with a, a minor CUP and leaving in the discretion of one person, I, you know, I hate to even say that. It, it just doesn't sound right, especially we've got a brand-new planning director coming in. But it does open the door for payoff, so to speak. I mean, again, a, a person in that position could be persuaded via a bribe to approve something that might otherwise be exposed to the sunlight of a, a full public, public hearing. So, I, I really, I just not comfortable putting the planning director in that position. I just think it's not that much to ask of somebody when you think of the impact that it could possibly make, to have a full public hearing immediately from the get-go. So, I, I'm just really not in favor of doing it that way.
I think my comment on this is, I actually agree and understand where the mayor's coming from, because you think about it, if you have two-story houses, and on each side of the new house that wants to build a two-story, there's no reason to go through a CUP. I mean, it's not blocking anybody's view, and so to me, that would be a no-brainer. Unfortunately, on the other hand, can we trust that our planning director will know that anytime it could possibly impact a view, anytime it could possibly affect the lighting, that he would take that forward? And that's, that's the only question I have, is that we would be putting our trust into that person.
Right. And it's a good point, because...
I would almost like to see if we did, went that route, that the planning director and the chair of the planning commission in unison made that, if we went that route.
Right. Can you do that? I mean, it's a, it's a good idea, actually, and, because I did want to see some sort of flexibility in there, because maybe there are some projects that the planning commissioner or the planning director would just want to kick to the, you know, hey, this is controversial, we want the community to have a hearing, so it's obvious, you know, let's kick it to the planning commission. But, you know, there are some, and I think Councilmember Delmar said, there's going to be some that are just really not controversial, that really didn't need the full hearing. And so if you could account for both somehow through that process, I think it would be beneficial. But to Councilmember Delmar's point, can you do that, or...
We, we could draft an ordinance that, to call out that, we could, we could do that with all minor CUPs and have that always be with the planning director and the chair, potentially, of the planning commission, if that was going to be the city's process. The only issue there is if, for some reason, there's an appeal process as well, and again, going by memory, because believe it or not, I actually don't have the entire municipal code memorized. If the minor CUP or the director's decision were to get appealed to the planning commission, or alternatively, if at the minor CUP level, the planning director and that chair of the planning commission decided to push it up to the planning commission, then we'd have to deal with the potential of explaining whether or not the chair had already had some view or participated at the lower level, and whether they could continue to look at it in the, in the context. And so, but that's something that we could draft.
But it doesn't need to put part of this.
It, I can't draft it into this. It's, this, this ordinance tonight really doesn't have anything to do with the minor CUP procedure. That's a separate procedure under the code. But yes, it's something that we could look at in the future.
If I could comment, and we're, we're acting like this public hearing is the gold standard. I guess my concern with that, I'll just kind of share what one of my constituents shared with me the other day. He told me to actually throw this question out to the city. Would any of you like to go through a CUP process to get a second story on your home? I've not seen a lot of hands go up. And I think, I think, well, okay, I've got five hands up.
But the record showed that we had seven, eight hands.
The point is, the point is that this is a very burdensome thing to go through, and it's not just one hearing. If you go into the planning commission and they don't like what you've got, then you've got to come back. It can last for months, even years, and it costs a lot of money. In, in the meantime, people are financing whatever they're trying to produce. So I think that side of this is just, I just don't quite understand why we haven't heard that side of this, but it is a very real concern for a lot of people in town. And I think, I, I very much appreciate the willingness of Councilmember Delmar to consider a compromise on this. I want to just reiterate that I too, as the mayor, I did agree to the first, there are four changes in this ordinance. In the last meeting, I agreed to the first two. I wasn't real crazy about them, and I, I think that's been kind of the spirit of this council, is that we try to work together and we try to... is that we try to work together and we try to build consensus. And if we could make a compromise on the third and fourth, I think I could support this.
Mr. Mayor, I think, first of all, I can tell you that I have not heard anyone, either email, phone call, or tonight, who's opposed to passing this. So, again, I understand that people do not want to come down and go on speech, but it would be helpful, if I'm making a decision, if those people would talk or email me. And I asked that at the last time, and I have not heard from anybody. So, and I'm not saying that they aren't talking to you, because they feel comfortable with you, but they really need to understand that these kind of things, when you oppose it, you need to let all the council members know, so we see everybody. Because in my opinion, not one person has opposed this. We have a roomful of people who have said, "Go with everything." All the emails that I've gotten have said, you know, "Go with everything." And they're not all Sierra Madre, preserve Sierra Madre folks either, so...
We had one person from Idaho that weighed in, which was nice.
And it was a pro, right?
Yeah.
But I certainly, to make a concession, is maybe doing something with the minor CUP down the road. But I still like the way this is written.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do have the costs, the fee schedules on the city's website. The minor CUP is about 800, and the full CUP is about 2,900.
Okay. It's actually not, less than I thought. Okay. The other proposal I had was for, and I discussed this last meeting, was to, and if you could pass one down, was to potentially add a fourth tier, which we had discussed. And I'll quickly just go over this proposal. The third tier would be changed in that it would add, instead of 10%, it would be at 12% over the area for 11,000 square feet. And that third tier would be 11,000 to 30,000 square feet. And then, we would create a fourth tier for over 30,000 square feet, and you'd start at 5,780, which would be, if you take the 3,500 square-foot number, plus the 12%, up to 2,999, then you get to 5,780. And then, you would get, from there, 10% of the area over 30,000, which actually scales back. It would be, you know, instead of 12, you'd have 10%. And the big change there would be plus 5% of the area over 30,000 for detached accessory buildings. And so, my view on this, and again, I talked to John Hutt about this after the meeting, and he proposed this during the meeting. What we don't want are huge houses on these big lots. We completely agree, no one wants it.
Huge houses on little lots.
Well, we don't want huge houses on little lots. We also don't want, you know, gargantuan houses on gargantuan lots. So, but this would make sure that you had a house itself that would be, you know, scaled back quite considerably to what we're allowing now. But you would still have this provision where 5% over the 30,000, you would be allowed to build a detached building, whether that is a garage or some sort of permanent second unit. And I think that, you know, in my mind, that allows folks to continue the enjoyment and use of their property without, and at the same time, making sure that quote-unquote "McMansions" aren't being built, and making sure that you don't have 8,000 square-foot houses, you know, on some of these lots. And so, to me, this is a reasonable compromise, and I think it strengthens the ordinance. And just want to get your guys' thoughts on it.
My thought is, actually, if we're looking, and we do see massing in bulk, being able to do a second house away from the main house is going to reduce your mass and bulk.
Right.
And if we could enter this and then, and not have to come back for a first reading, I would be in favor of that. Also, I wanted to talk about your, you know, replacing a home. And I have no problem putting language in here that if you're building a like house, you do not need to go through the CUP, that process. I almost am 100% sure that it is in all of our ordinances, but in the case, it's not this, this wouldn't be harming that at all. Just be double-duetting.
Okay.
I will say, I definitely entertain the idea of adding the fourth tier. I mean, I think that was very compelling when we talked about it, but I was not comfortable with us coming up with numbers. Remember, we were like, oh, let's put 14, let's put 15. So, I'm just curious as to, Mayor, where the numbers came from, and if they're substantiated somehow with, you know, what makes sense with the planning commission? So, yes, I'm amenable to a fourth tier. I just want to make sure that it comes from somewhere that makes sense from a planning perspective, as opposed to our numbers that we just threw out last meeting.
Yep. So, and I'll explain, it's a good question. So, as it currently is set up, the first three tiers all kind of waterfall off of each other. If you look at the under 7,500 square foot, it's 35% of the lot area, which is not controversial there. But then you get to the second tier, and you start at the 26,25 square foot, which is, that is based off of the 35% of the square footage of the previous tier. And then, you get 25% of your lot area. So, you get a over 7,500. So, in that bottom tier, you're getting a larger percentage to build on your overage. If you go to the next tier, the third tier, it's the same thing. You start with the amount of square footage, that would be just adding the initial square footage you're allowed to build, plus the 25% of your lot, over 7,500, that's the 3,500. Plus, and then before, it was 10%. But I would like to add, I would bump it up 2% because it kind of goes in line with the waterfall. You go from 25% to 12%. And then, the fourth tier would be at 10% over. And the reason why I think that makes sense is because you'll have a lot of homeowners between 11,000 and 30,000 that will say, one, you're giving lots over 30,000 square foot this out to do the detached garage. That wouldn't get incorporated in the square footage, but you really didn't give us anything. And I think that the compromise there is that for any house between 11,000 and 30,000 square feet, you give them 12% of their overage over 11,000 instead of 10%. So, the numbers, you know, there is a methodology there. You go from 25% to 12% to 10%. In terms of square footage, it's the same line. If you looked at a graph, it'd be the same graph that the planning commission wanted to institute. The only real difference is that 5% over 30,000, that would allow for a detached building, would allow for a garage, essentially.
Just a quick question.
Yep.
How, what percentage of, what percentage of an acre is 30,000 square feet, you know?
So, an acre is 41,000?
41,000, something, 43,000. It's above, little over 40,000.
And didn't we determine there was how many lots like that in the town?
Like 19?
There were 20 over one acre.
Over one acre.
But there's still quite a few that are, say, three-quarter of an acre to an acre. There's, I saw quite a few of those.
Yeah, I think they told us last time, it was like 19 or 20.
Of the over acre. Yeah, there's only 19 or 20.
Yeah, so, well, you know, I mean, at the last meeting, I was willing to even make that third tier 12%. So, I think this is even...
Yeah, I kept that in mind when I came up with the 12%, so...
I think this is reasonable.
So do I.
Did Mr. Hutt go through these?
You know, I didn't, so I...
But he mentioned something similar to this at the last meeting, right?
You know, he mentioned something like this at the last meeting. We talked after, and then I, you know, we came up with this, this type of, you know, compromise on the fourth, on the fourth tier, which I think actually is better.
If I could just comment, I mean, look, it's not changing anything on the first two tiers, is where we all acknowledged, even from the testimony at the last meeting, that that's where the real problem is. And it's, this is still more restrictive than the original ordinance, too. So, we're just given a little bit more leeway. And again, when we discussed this last time, when we talked about the big houses on the really big lots, there was not, I could not detect a strong argument as to what we were trying to protect there, other than that, say, a 6,500 square-foot house is big enough. And, you know, I personally agree with that, but it's still, from where we sit, I'm not sure that that's reason enough to impose that on somebody when it really doesn't have an impact on the neighborhood, because the lot, it's acknowledged that it could support it. So, why would we impose something like that when it's really not getting to the goals that we're trying to accomplish, which I think we've done with these lower tiers? So, and remember also, we just can't forget that the threshold for the CUPs is reduced. So, if there is a case where a large house on a large lot is not fitting, the planning commission has the discretion to ensure that that is built smaller, so that it is appropriate. So, I think we've got, this is a reasonable compromise that I would support. It still accomplishes, to me, all the objectives that we've set out to do here. Now, if there is an objective that we just don't like big houses, there might be some people that have that objective, but I'm not sure that that's in the general plan anywhere, and I certainly don't have that opinion. So...
Well, I mean, I would be in favor, obviously, with this addition.
Did I say I would?
I think you did, yeah. I think we have, are we, I actually don't know on this side...
I just, if my math is correct, I mean, it looks like it's in alignment. But again, I wish we had someone, anyone from planning, to comment on it. But I mean, again, from what we discussed at the last meeting, from what I recall, and at least what the intent was, the numbers look right. But again, I would love to have some reassurance, but I don't know if we've got anyone here.
How big of a question is, how big of a concern is it that you would vote against it, or?
No, but again, I just feel like I am, they're numbers out of thin air, but I think they're based out of something. And if I, again, if I went through my, if my math is correct, the percentages are pretty along the same lines for every lot area, except for maybe the 11,000 to 30,000. I think that's a smaller house in general, but I just like some reassurance.
I will tell you this. A lot of this started, the floor area ratio started when we put it into the general plan. And I can tell you that we probably had three or four meetings where we discussed this. And I can tell you, in the three and four meetings, I totally didn't understand this, and depended on John Hutt, and Terrell Willis, and Leslie and all the other folks. So, probably by the end, about the fourth meeting, I finally got it. And so, I can look at this and say that this is fair. It's, the goals that we're trying to reach are, we can reach them with this. And the 30,000 feet, to me, it's not the size, but the mass and bulk that we're trying to protect there.
And remember, I'll just keep repeating, that the planning commission has discretion on the larger ones, anything over 3,500, they can, they can cut it off if it doesn't fit. So, I think we've just got plenty of protection.
Yeah, I think that's, and I'm glad you emphasized that, that's helpful, too, as I'm thinking about it.
As long as your ratios are staying the same, it looks good. That's just my opinion.
I think this is an improvement. I'm still not convinced we need to do it, but I can support this. I think it's a little bit better than what we were brought in the original ordinance. I'm still concerned about the second story CUP, though.
You know, I'm still concerned about that, too. You know, I would, on the second story CUP, you know, I don't know what, you know, if we were to pass it tonight, you know, there is the, it'd be really hard to try to bring it back and consider it again. But if I were to vote for it, you know, can we, I guess, can we agree as a council, or at least in theory, think about, you know, if this were to become a, I guess, a real, real issue with the planning commission, you just got, you know, they're bogged down with all these second story CUPs, and, you know, a ton of folks are coming to the podium saying, "How dare you? We didn't know you were going to do this, and, you know, you're the dumbest people in the world for doing this." You know, I think we have to be open to reconsidering it, right? I mean, I just think that the CUP on the second story, you know, while it has some merit, I mean, I don't think anyone will disagree that it has merit, I just think that it does burden, it does burden homeowners from using, from a reasonable use on their house. And so, I'm still struggling with the CUP on the second story, too. But I guess with this compromise, you know, I'm more inclined to go with the package. Sorry.
And I actually like the idea of a minor CUP, if the chair and the planning director look at it, and it's a no-brainer. Because I, I don't, you know, I don't want to bog the planning commission down, but there are going to be cases where, yeah, we need to have the full hearing, we need to have the planning commission do it.
Can we modify this ordinance to include that?
We don't have to. The attorney just said that we could do that at a later date, and I think we're all in agreement, we could do that.
I don't know if, I don't know if that's what she meant. Madam City Attorney, did you, sorry, yeah. Did you, to Councilmember Delmar's point, if we, if Councilmember Delmar were, let's say she were in favor of the minor CUP path, instead of the full CUP, how would, how would we reflect that at all tonight in this ordinance? So, you know, I think, there was some confusion, because what you said, you did make a comment that said, "We wouldn't necessarily have to fiddle with the minor CUP provision here now," but I think you would have to make, you would have to say specifically in the ordinance that you are allowing the minor CUP process to play out, right?
We would have to do that. If you wanted to, I mean, you have a couple of choices. You could say that under the conditionally permitted uses, 1720-025 subsection B, which talks about any second story addition to an existing, so we have a single-story home, and someone wants to put a second story on that didn't exist before, or any new construction proposed to include a second story. So, that's constructed from the ground up. You could say that, you know, from one extreme to the other, you could say that any of those would be subject to a minor CUP, rather than a CUP process. That's one extreme on the continuum. Or you could call out which of those types of second-story constructions would go to minor CUP, rather than a regular CUP.
I don't think the latter is what our conversation is...
I would almost say that as a council, we could agree, as the mayor said, that if this is becoming such an issue with the planning commission, so that we need to bring it back and look at it, I would agree to that as well.
The one thing I will say, though, to the issue of calling out replacement for an existing, that actually is necessary. We have been taking the time to go through the municipal code, and there is no provision, other than the one I suggested, which is for illegal non-conforming use. That's the only place in the municipal code that would allow you to build, rebuild a house lost to casualty. I mean, you'd still have to get building permits. So, if you wanted to make that exception, so that someone rebuilding an existing second-story home, we could write that right in tonight. We could, we could say, "Except for replacement of an existing second-story structure, lost due to a fire or other casualty event, comma, any second story addition to an existing single," you know, just keep the rest of the language. And that, if that's something the council wants to do, we can call out the exception there. What that would mean is that if somebody's house did burn down, there's, of course, they're still going to have to pull all the same building permits that any of us would have to do, but they wouldn't have to go through a CUP process, whether it was minor or regular CUP.
So, Madam City Attorney, though, the way this conversation has been going tonight, if we are considering a fourth tier, we would still have to be going back to a first reading, correct?
If, if we can agree, two things. If this ordinance informed that it is now before you, because tonight's second reading was not published, and I think the city manager said it had not been published, and if we can agree on language this evening, then we can call this the new first reading, and you'll still have to have a second reading. On the other hand, if we can't agree on language, and you only give direction to staff to bring back some language, then we would start all over again with a new first and a new second.
So, counsel, given that we have, we have some proposed language on the second story that we may be able to agree with, and that our mayor has so kindly put together language here for the fourth tier on the allowable gross floor area, I mean, those are, those are the two main pieces, correct?
Well, I'm still not okay with the minor CUP on the second story.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
Oh, no, no, we're not. I'm not even...
Okay, all right, just wanted to make it clear.
That's off the table.
But the exception clause for replacement, I'm good with, and I'm good with the proposed changes here. Yeah.
Those two items, as am I.
So, this would be first reading, and we'd come back?
Councilmember Delmar, I thought, I thought I heard you say that in principle, you thought the minor CUP was good for most.
Oh, I did, but we're not putting it in tonight.
Why not? Why not?
Because I thought we couldn't.
Well, we, another question, just a follow-up question, if I could, what's the hurry? If we were developing a consensus here, if we go back for a first reading, what, in two weeks or four weeks, we can put it in the agenda?
Well, Councilwoman Goss, what I said was, I would agree to what the mayor had suggested was, if this is becoming a problem with the Planning Commission, because I think we just learned that the cost between a minor CUP and a fully CUP is, the difference isn't as much as we thought. So if we all agree as a council, saying, "If this is bogging down the Planning Commission, or we have all these angry people coming," that we would revisit that and...
Way I understood it.
That's...
Are you going to put language to that effect into this?
Is there, yeah, is there any way that we can, can you not write something in for a, a review process in six months or nine months?
You can just ask staff to bring it back.
That's a policy call.
That's a policy.
Just do it.
Just tell staff to bring a review back in six months.
Okay. Are we ready?
So...
Well, did you, sorry, did, folks can keep talking if...
Well, I'm just not clear. I mean, we, we, you pretty much are telling me that the second story CUP is, we're not changing that, right?
Right.
Okay. I can't support the ordinance then.
But with that exception.
For a building that burns down.
Right.
Yeah, the burnt...
So that is the exception.
Is there, and it sounds like we have consensus on three of the four big areas. Is there any way to vote on each separate, or vote on the three and then have the second story CUP as a separate vote? Have that provision?
I will agree.
And I'd say I'm ready to vote on all four elements.
So there's no way to, to break out, even if, you know, again, doesn't sound like we have council consensus, but could you break out the individual pieces?
I, theoretically, I could by striking from the existing ordinance one of the provisions, but now we would be, if you took it out, I'd also have to take it out of the title of the ordinance, and now we're too far afield. When, when I have to start changing the title of the ordinance, because we've so substantively modified it that we're completely eradicating a major piece of it, then, then I start to worry that there wasn't proper public notice. So I think if you were to do that, you would have to have a new first reading and a new second reading.
So tonight would be a new first reading anyway, though, right?
A new first reading, because we're, we're sticking with the same title, the structure of the ordinance is basically the same. You would be modifying some of the language, but not, you know, changing substantively the entire ordinance. And if you can agree on the language, then tonight can be the new first reading, and we'll still have to have a second.
If I, if I could just point something out, it looks to me like we have, on four of these issues, we have consensus. I mean, I think that's an accomplishment, but we don't have consensus on the second story CUP, separating it, bringing it back for another discussion. Maybe we could work it, work something out. Seems to me there, we have some open minds here.
I, I don't, I wouldn't, yeah, we have consensus on the second story, and I wouldn't want to hold anything up to bring that back.
Well, you have majority, not consensus.
Majority, but we do have consensus on, on the other areas, but we just need the majority. So that would be, I wouldn't...
Well, no, and I agree with Councilmember Goss. I mean, I still don't, I still don't see why the CUP on the second story is, is really needed. You know, and I, I think that this is not a clear issue even up here on this council. I mean, I think that, you know, you have, you have two council members that are in favor of it, two that are against it, and I think Councilmember Delmar is necessarily so, and I, I agree with her, it's a hard issue. So I think the, I think this issue is a bit more controversial than the other three, and in some ways, my son sees, he doesn't like it either.
He's still a you.
But I think, I just, you know, I understand where, where you guys are coming from. I just think that, I have always viewed the second story CUP as being different from these other, these other three. So that's why I'm struggling with this, and that's why I am taking a little bit of time, because I think the other three, I think the other three provisions have merit. I think they get to the, I think they get to the goal that we're trying to get to. You know, I think the second story CUP just is a little, it's a little over intrusive.
And just to be clear, I'm, I'm not opposed to...
No, no, and you didn't say you.
Second story. We need to have something in, in this ordinance that protects the homeowners for the second story. And I guess it just depends on which homeowners you want to protect. Do you want to protect the ones that are building, or do you want to protect the ones that have the existing?
Good point.
But if we could, I do not want to burden the Planning Commission with a lot of no-brainers, but I do think we have to have the second story. And the only concession I'm willing to make is, is that fourth tier. And so if we can go forward with that and everything else, then that's what we can go with.
Yeah, and we've agreed that if it's a problem, we'll look at it again. I mean, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just don't, you know, I mean, if somebody's caught in the crossfire here, the expense, we can always waive the expense on a case-by-case basis if it comes up. I mean, if somebody is really overburdened because we forced them into this and they make a good case, I mean, we could do that, and we can address the larger issue of the fees for it anyway.
Mayor Protem, I know you got three votes, and I'm, you have to vote, and I think you're going to carry this, but I think we're missing, I just haven't heard the, the people who will be affected by this, who will never file for a CUP and never pay the $2,900, because this is now setting up a roadblock for them that they don't want to go through. So, so all these things that you're saying...
Not a roadblock, not a roadblock.
But it is for a lot of people.
A speed bump.
Okay, I'll go with that. A very high speed bump for a lot of people. Most people don't have $2,900 to throw down and say, take a crap shoot at whether or not they're going to have, you know, the planning commissioners go for their home or not, their second story addition. So there will be a lot of people affected by this, but you won't hear about them being, jamming up the Planning Commission. They just won't do it. I mean, that's, that's just what's going to happen, which I guess is the goal here of the majority.
No.
Well, it is, it isn't? I mean, are you, aren't you trying to limit how many second-story homes can be built in this city?
Not at all. That's not what this is about.
Well, what is it about?
It's not about limiting second stories. It's about assuring that the second story does not impact the mass and the bulk compared to the other homes. So it is not about eliminating second stories.
Okay, so the intent is good, but the actual effect, we'll, we'll have a big effect on who can build a house, second-story house in this town.
I think we can be really, really luster, and if you're building a, a second story, you're going to have money for a CUP. You just work it into the...
I don't agree with that at all.
Yeah, I don't know.
I know people who are very modest means, young families right here in town, who might like to put a second story on to accommodate their growing families.
Well, then we can review that in six months and see how many people are being affected by this, and if we need to make it a minor, then we can.
Okay, well, we can call a vote, and, you know, I'm still not comfortable with the CUP on the second story, and I'm sorry, guys, but I, and you don't have to, you don't have to go with the fourth tier if you don't want to either. I understand that, you know, I understand that you guys are trying to compromise, I was trying to compromise, too. I just, you know, the second story CUP, just, I still don't see the merit to it. But we'll, let's call a vote and see where we are.
I'll, I'll make the motion to, I wouldn't even know how to phrase this, so adopt the, it would be adopt the ordinance or approve the first reading with the modifications on the second story element to include the caveat of building on a, rebuilding an existing structure, as the city, Madam City Attorney had articulated, and also for the allowable gross floor area to include a fourth tier as stipulated in this modified language that the mayor had provided.
I'd second that.
Okay.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Nay. And, look, I want the record to show that I, I really do like the three, three of the four items, and I'd asked to break out the, the second story CUP, and I, it wasn't, so I don't want folks to think that this wasn't a, it was an ordinance that didn't have any merit. I think it's, I think it's a good ordinance. I just couldn't, I couldn't vote for the second story CUP. Well, thank you, guys. Let's move on to more fun stuff now with our agenda.
The next item up would be a presentation to outgoing Mayor John Capocha and Mayor Harabedian. You have a plaque in front of you that you may present to him.
I do, and, you know, this is, this is half a gavel.
[laughing].
You get half a gavel tonight, and you'll get the full gavel in a year, but let me just say that it, you know, Mayor Protem and I came on this council together, we campaigned together, I wouldn't say we campaigned against each other, we were, you know, we've been at this for now three years from the get-go, and I respect him so much, I really do. I think he, he is, in many ways, the perfect council member for any city, but, but even more so for Sierra Madre, and the amount of time and effort that he puts in to this council and the leadership that he provides is just really outstanding. It's a model that I've always tried to, you know, follow and live up to, and oftentimes stumble and don't. But, you know, I think that we as a city are just so lucky to have him, and we're very lucky to have him as, you know, I'm not going to be presumptuous as our next mayor, but, you know, John, you have been, you know, my right-hand man, literally, during my mayorship, and I couldn't have done it without you, and we all should be very proud and appreciative of all your work. So thank you very much. And we can, and let me, it is the Mayor Protem's birthday tonight, and...
Birthday tonight.
Yeah, and I would like to sing him happy birthday, if we could all sing happy birthday. So if you could all stand, and, and I'm going to turn off my mic, because I'm a terrible singer.
I know.
But, one, two, three.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you.
Cheers, John, Mayor Protem.
Happy birthday to you.
Well, thank you. Those words mean a lot to me, and you're, you're very kind and generous to, to say that.
Thank you.
But now it's my turn?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor Harabedian gets the full gavel as opposed to the half gavel, and that's significant and very deserving, because, I mean, I can't say enough about what I believe John has done for us, and I've sat here as Mayor Protem and admired him on how, you know, not only is he just extremely well-prepared, unlike him, I'm retired, I have time, he does not, but he's still able to just grasp the issues and come. I've never seen him stumble over anything in front of this council. And also, just, I really admire his ability to deal with the public. He's a very patient man, and, you know, if I'm elected mayor here, it's an extremely hard act to follow, because he's done such a good job. So with that, I'll present him this, and Sierra Madre, I do feel that you are very fortunate to have had him as your mayor, and hopefully he'll be mayor again.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Give me a hug.
Both of us holding our gavels. Thanks.
Yeah, and again, very, very kind words, and they mean a lot, obviously, coming from you, John, so...
Before you comment, Mayor...
Yes.
There's also city proclamation, and if they haven't left yet, we do have people in the audience to present things to you.
Okay.
So you can save your comments.
[inaudible] Anyways, it is a pleasure to be here today on behalf of Supervisor Mike Antonovich. I just want to give mad props to your leadership. I applaud your charisma. You lead with energy and joy, and it's been a pleasure to see you in the community, and the supervisor sends a token of his appreciation for your fabulousness, and the City of Sierra Madre thanks you.
Thank you, Rita.
[applause]
Yeah, come on. Wow, this is really nice.
Oh, yeah? [laughing]. It's usually so.
Thank you. Now you just go home.
Good night.
I'll just stay.
Mayor Harabedian, you've been a fantastic mayor for the City of Sierra Madre. We at the Chamber of Commerce really am glad to join you. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and our Board of Directors, including Treasurer Susan Henderson and our Board Member Carol Canterbury, we'd like to present you this plaque. We know your roots in Sierra Madre runs deep, so this is a wooden plaque, and we know that, you know, you've planted roots here yourself as well, and your beautiful family, and the wonderful work that you're able to do to balance your life and to continue to serve the public in a classy way you've been able to do so this past year. So we want to thank you for your leadership, your support for the Chamber of Commerce, and the Wisteria Festival. We see you barbecuing, being on the... So thank you again, and congratulations on a great term.
Thank you. All right. [inaudible] All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And then we have...
Couple more here.
Couple more.
All right, I'll come up here for that.
The Mayor Protem will present.
Okay, I'm going to do the California Legislature first, because the Sierra Madre one is always the...
It's the prettiest.
Yes. Okay, this is California Legislature Assembly Certificate of Recognition presented to the Honorable John Harabedian, Mayor of Sierra Madre. In recognition of your service as mayor to the City of Sierra Madre and your dedication to improving the quality of life for the residents of Sierra Madre, I wish you the best in your future endeavors and continued success. From Chris Holden, Assembly Member 41st District.
Thank you, thank you. He must have been stuck in traffic. He must have, you know, he wanted to be there.
Okay, now, the, the most desirable proclamation of all is, of course, the famed Certificate of Recognition from the City of Sierra Madre. In recognition of John Harabedian, Mayor 2014 to 2015. Whereas John Harabedian was elected to serve on the City Council in 2012, serving as Mayor Protem from April 2013 through April 2014, Mayor from April 14, April 2014 to April 2015, and whereas Mayor Harabedian has also been an advocate for the financial health of the city's water utility and for the long-term sustainability of the city's water resources with the implementation of a water meter moratorium and enactment of a comprehensive water conservation program, and whereas during his term, Mayor Harabedian provided leadership that resulted in city infrastructure improvements, including replacement of the Mountain Trail Water Main, the successful completion of the Grand View Sewer Project, and the approval of a 2015 sidewalk master plan, and whereas Mayor Harabedian focused on community preservation through the implementation of a moratorium on demolition of pre-1940 structures, adoption of a new demolition ordinance that implements a new discretionary demolition permit process for homes that are 75 years and older, and the creation of a public safety committee, and whereas Mayor Harabedian's leadership, and, well, you've done a lot.
We have, yeah.
Yeah, leadership and dedication resulted in a city staff reorganization plan that saved the city more than $180,000 annually, and the implementation of a balanced fiscal year 2014-2015 budget. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of, City Council of the City of Sierra Madre does hereby commend with great appreciation Mayor John Harabedian for his dedication and service to the community of Sierra Madre, presented this 28th day of April 2015, from the Sierra Madre City Council. Mayor John Harabedian, Mayor Protem John Capocha, Council Members Rachelle Arizmendi, Denise Delmar, and Jean Goss.
Yeah, I know. That's a long one. Thank you very much. This is, it's a pretty one, it's the best one. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you. And thank you that, for that, Mayor Protem. The, I'll be brief because we have cake to eat and we have to install a new Mayor, new Mayor Protem, but all I can say tonight, you know, really is just a list of thank yous. The, first and foremost to the staff, you know, our staff, starting with our city manager and all of our directors, and, and right down the line to everyone that, every employee that does things like fix our potholes to patrols our streets, you know, all these accomplishments were, were done because of them. You know, they weren't done as, because of me, and I want to give full credit to them and just thank them for all the help that they have been, not only my whole time on the council, but when you're the mayor, you really do rely, you know, a great deal on staff. So Elaine, the rest of the staff, Terry, our city attorney, thank you so much for making the year so great, absolutely. I'd like, I'd like to thank my colleagues, I really would. This past year has been just such a pleasure serving with this group and such smart, hard-working council members that every day come to, come to work with the same goal, which is to make Sierra Madre and keep Sierra Madre a perfect place to live, which it is. And I just think that we have a great team up here, and as the mayor, I was a beneficiary of having a strong council, and when you're a mayor, you really do look to your right and your left, and you are no better or no worse than, than the team that you have up on the dais, and we have a great team, and they have made this past year just such a pleasure. And the last thank you would be to my, to my constituents, well, actually, I have two more, to the constituents of Sierra Madre. It has been an absolute honor and pleasure to be your mayor. It's been the biggest honor in my life, having grown up here, having my family here, having this as my home since, since day one, to be able to, for a full year, serve as your mayor was really just surreal, and it still is kind of surreal now that I won't be mayor. I don't think it will sink in for many years just how much of a privilege it was, but thank you so much for your confidence and day in, day out, giving me a lot of encouragement and also telling me when I was wrong, and also, you know, being, being very patient when maybe I, you know, there was growing pains and maybe there were some missteps, but I think that, I think all in all is a good year, and thank you very much for, for supporting me. And lastly, my family who are here today, my mother, my father, my sisters, brother-in-laws, but mostly my wife, who is back there with, with my son, John, but Young G, thank you so much. This past year has been, it's been quite a roller coaster, and it's, it's been very busy, and with the addition of John and everything else, thank you for being patient with me and, and learning to eat dinner without me a lot, and I just, I love you very much, and I do, I do want you to know that obviously I couldn't have done it without you, so thank you very much. And with that, I'm done, so.
Now is the part of the agenda where it's recommended that the council appoint a mayor, Mayor Protem. At this point, nominations for the mayor's position are now open.
Well, I would like to. I had the honor of nominating Mayor Protem Capocha for Mayor Protem last year. It would be a great honor for me to nominate you again for the mayor of Sierra Madre.
Well, then I will second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? None, it is unanimous. We have a new mayor, John Capocha.
We can change seats, and Mr. Mayor, I will let you conduct the process for nominating a Mayor Protem.
I'd like to ask for a motion to nominate a Mayor Protem.
I will nominate. Jean Goss as Mayor Protem?
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously.
Good luck, sir, congratulations.
Okay, well, I think my biggest, well, I guess I should make a speech. I have to, I have to, I wasn't going to, but then Madam City Clerk told me it might be expected. So I thought, I thought rather than ramble, I'll write one so I can hand it to her, she could put it in the minutes. So again, thank you very much, it's truly an honor to serve as a member of the Sierra Madre City Council, especially now as mayor. I'm really uncomfortable giving a speech because this is not really about me, but it's about the continuation of the great tradition we have here in Sierra Madre, where its elected representatives are very connected to the people they serve. So first, I want to thank all the citizens of Sierra Madre. You're all very special by just the virtue of being a member of this very special place. But I want to especially thank all of you who, who participate in the democratic process by voting, stopping to voice your opinions directly or in writing, or by coming to the meetings and addressing the council at the podium. I know it's a nervous thing to do that, but we really appreciate when you do. And to all of you that volunteer in this town, thank you so much because that's certainly one of the many things that makes Sierra Madre special. I also want to thank city staff and the legal team. These are very hard-working people that care very much about you and your city and are very responsive to the direction giving to, given to them by the city council. I know that our citizens have extremely high expectations, and that's okay. These folks do a fantastic job, and they work hard to give our citizens what they expect. Also want to thank my peers on the council, the last year has been absolutely terrific. I feel we've accomplished a lot, but what's also important is how we accomplished it. We don't always agree, as you can see here tonight, but we bring out the best in each other, and we work together to serve our constituents. But lastly, again, thanks to outgoing Mayor John Harabedian. His are big shoes to fill. He conducted the council meetings efficiently, he ensured that everyone on the council had the opportunity to express his or her thoughts and argue their respective positions thoroughly, and he was great with the public. For those that are willing to speak at our meetings, he always allowed enough time to ensure that their thoughts are fully expressed while deftly nudging along those that tend to drift a bit. Mayor Harabedian is always well-prepared, I admire him for that, knowing the demands that are placed upon him at work, and I want to thank his wife, Young G, because I know that she is also sacrificing so that John can fulfill his duties to his own high internal standards. I certainly hope that I can come close to doing half as good a job as he did. But now moving ahead, we have some huge challenges. Of course, water and managing development are of great concern, but at the moment of most, us, of most concern to me is a budget problem that's caused by the sunset of the UUT. This has the capability of bringing some radical, undesirable, and permanent changes to the community. I urge everyone to engage on this issue. The problem will only be solved by everybody working together, the city council, city staff, and Sierra Madre citizens. Sierra Madre has been around for more than 100 years, and they've always tackled every problem in front of them. I'm extremely optimistic that we'll do it once again. Thanks to everybody.
Just a motion to adjourn to cake.
Can I have a motion?
I move to adjourn to cake.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, we're adjourned.
All right.